Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Agenda Review Meeting. Because there are no items to be briefed, Mr. Scott will not be joining us, so we will go directly into consideration of amendments and deferral, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Wright. Oh, Ms. Fister, call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council President. We have a number of items related to tonight's agenda, so we can start with those. The first is a potential request to suspend the rules to move OPR 2025-0522. This is the inter-local agreement of Spokane County relating to services at Matty's Place, and to remove it from final consideration on July 28th to final consideration tonight. So I'm moved.
Councilmember?
Second.
It's been moved?
Yeah, never mind. I had a different motion.
Motion to suspend the rules. There was a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, second. All in favor of rule suspension, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any noes? Rules are suspended. Go ahead, Mr. Wright. So I'll entertain, and this is specifically for Matty's Place at this point in time, entertain a motion to consider Matty's Place for this evening. Is there a motion to move that?
No move.
Councilmember Bingle, councilmember, moved in second by councilmember Oppone-Bingle. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is on for tonight's reading. Next?
Thank you, council. Next item is a potential motion to suspend the rules and consider the Cathcart-Wilkerson Amendment to the Special Budget Ordinance C 36710 related to opioid funding. You would keep final consideration for tonight if adopted, so that'll be part of the motion to suspend.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yep, I'll move to suspend the rules for the purposes of considering amendments to Ordinance C 36710.
There a second?
Second.
It's moving to second. All those in favor of the rule suspension for motion, Ordinance C 36710, please indicate. I'm sorry.
I apologize. Question on this. I haven't seen this one until, what does the amendment do?
Do you want to walk, are you able to walk us through it, Mr. Wright?
The amendment actually adds a couple, a breakdown of the way the money is spent to three different categories. I don't have access to my computer at the moment, so I would tell you what they are, but that's where this is.
That's for that extra $430,000? Okay, cool.
Yeah, just for clarification. So the version of the SBO that we've had just said $730,000 for contractual. This breaks it down into the specific areas.
So it's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is moved. Mr. Cathcart?
I will so move the Cathcart-Wilkerson Amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Cathcart-Wilkerson Amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention? That is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart.
Thank you, council. Next item is a potential motion to amend Resolution 2025-0047. This relates to the Parks Levy Pro and Con Committees. The proposed amendment by councilmembers Oppone would add names to the pro committee and one name to the con committee.
Who are the names? Oh, sorry.
I don't have access to the amendments.
Go ahead, councilmember Oppone, speak to that.
Well, I think I would first move to adopt this amendment.
Second. It's moving in second.
And then I can speak to that. It would add the pro committee would be David Condon and Annie Billick, and the con committee would be Dennis Flynn.
I thought we already did that.
No.
I told Park Board, hey, these are your people on the pro-con on Thursday, so, all right.
I think, I was there. I think those are the ones you shared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I thought we'd already adopted it. I'd already seen the names. All right, great.
It's been moving.
Foreshadowing.
Yeah. Moving in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is adopted?
Thank you, council. Next item is, council president requests a motion to amend Resolution 2025-0051 relating to an inclusive procurement process. This is one where we get into an interesting discussion about the rules. This motion was submitted, or this amendment was submitted timely, but the way our Rule 4.2 reads, it's unclear whether adoption of this amendment would result in an automatic deferral of one week. So what I'm recommending is that you consider the amendment and then consider a possible motion to whether it would result in an automatic deferral.
Councilmembers Oppone?
Well, I will move to approve and automatically defer it one week. As one motion.
Second.
And I can speak to that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think this is helpful for us as a council to weigh in and maybe give some advisement to staff. We've talked about this multiple times, but it is a new rule, I believe, from our previous conversations, both at the time when we were adopting the rules and since, that the intent of council has been to have clean versions considered at the legislative meeting, whether that's a resolution, a first ordinance, or a second reading, first reading or second reading ordinance. And so the question about being timely would be submitted, to me, a timely amendment submitted would be the Wednesday before the meeting where we vote on it. So it would be last Wednesday for today, anytime before that. That way it's in the packet. Everyone sees the amendment. If it's adopted, then it results in an automatic deferral, if it's to be read that night. With a suspension of the rules, it would be read for that first reading, second reading, or resolution. If it is a, an amendment that would require suspension of the rules would be an untimely amendment that's submitted and not in the packet by that Wednesday deadline. So from Wednesday to Monday, this morning, if one of us came up with an amendment, that would require a suspension of the rules because it wasn't published in the, in the packet. So that is my interpretation, and looking to see if that's kind of the direction that council had thought. That way we can kind of give staff some advisement.
All that being said, this was actually triggered by a holiday, which speaks to my idea of changing our dates, but any other council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart, then councilmember Klitsky.
This is to also defer one week, just?
The motion was to amend it and defer.
Okay.
As one motion.
Okay, very good. And then, so the only thing I would just throw out there, I would love, and so many things on my plate, wasn't able to dig into this before, but with a week deferral, potentially, we could. I would just like to understand either the council's intent or the administration's direction on this one, which says, "Be it also resolved, city council requests the mayor direct the Department of Purchasing and Contracts to use the assembled data to enhance access to contracting with the city for small businesses, especially minority veteran and women-owned businesses." It sounds like there's a direction to actually do something differently. Obviously, this isn't code, but with lower-dollar contracts, something differently could be happening, and I just want to make sure that we understand what the intent of it is, and council is going to be informed of what procedural changes might be put in place.
Well, I'll just quickly speak to that. And looking at this, it actually is to capture information and to direct the administration to share that out. Councilmember Cathcart, you know, we had tried to pass an ordinance last year for small works contracts that did not go through, so this is the next step in trying to capture that information. Are we doing what we said we're doing? If not, then how do we improve the process? So it's a one-year pilot, and then we'll come back and we reevaluate, which I think will give a foundation to other things as we're looking at work ordinances going forward.
Sure.
So anyway, there's a direction to the administration. Talk with procurement. They are good with this, and the administration is good with this as it stands.
I guess if I could just, real quick, so my only concern, or I guess real desire, is that there's going to be some reporting back to us if there's process changes, or how we, changes in how we make decisions in terms of awarding contracts, because at that lower level, they don't necessarily have to come, you know, in advance. So I just want to make sure we understand internally, if there's changes, what those are.
Absolutely. I think any changes wouldn't be made until after we get the report back.
Okay.
That, that is my interpretation of the resolution. Would anybody else have any interpretation? That's, that's how it was written, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think creating those recommendations after that one-year reporting, but I think it would be helpful to, and always is, just to kind of check in on the implementation side.
Okay, there was a motion in a second to adopt and defer until July 21st. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention? That is deferred. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Next item is a potential motion to amend Ordinance C 36721 relating to alcohol advertising. To adopt the Dillon Amendment, and having written this one, I can tell you, all it does is remove the reference to a special effective date, so the ordinary timeline for effective date, what 30 days, would apply.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Dillon Amendment.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt the Dillon Amendment.
Question on this one. The gentleman who came and spoke about the alcohol signage, is that addressed? Did we get that worked out?
Yeah, I mean, that's what this ordinance does. We have a gap in laws between ourselves and Spokane Valley. Spokane Valley adopted very similar legislation, I believe, back in March. The Liquor Control Board is going out and now enforcing the WAC, and so we wanted to move a little more, I think, expediently with an effective date, because before the ordinance as written was a little more open-ended.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention? That is approved. Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, council. Next item is consideration of Dillon Amendment to Ordinance C 36723. This relates to city public works. The Public Dollars for Public Works, I think, is our title. Adoption of this amendment without a rule suspension would result in an automatic deferral of first reading to July 1 and final consideration to July 28.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the Dillon Amendment.
Second.
And just like to speak on this.
Please.
Yeah. So for this amendment, this does remove the childcare requirement. It does align some of the definitions with our Washington Administrative Code, and then for penalties and remedies, it makes sure that it is aligned with our current apprenticeship program. The kind of, I think, big update, you know, we had a really good discussion last week with the Spokane Alliance, Association of General Contractors, and Shamrock Paving, and some others, and there might be some potential cleanup around this, but this was sort of the latest version, and so for public, I think, consumption and understanding and education, this is the current amendment, and move this to the 28th.
Any other council commentary on this? All those in favor of the rule suspension and the adoption of the deferral till July for first reading?
Are we suspending the rules?
No.
No. We're not suspending, okay.
Just adopting amendment.
Adopting amendment. All those, motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? That is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, council. I understand there's, the next item is a potential motion to defer final consideration of Ordinance C 36701 relating to property maintenance and use standards to September 22nd.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any commentary?
Yeah, so this is one that I think, you know, a lot of these guidelines and ordinances are already on the books, but as we're repackaging and adding some things, you know, I had a lot of folks who are in the commercial property space reach out with some concerns, and this is one that I think we could probably get to a space where everybody's on board. And so a couple-month deferral here would allow us to sort of convene a work group over the next couple of months and get their feedback, and then move forward and potentially have something that the, the entire city could get on board with.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, I think this has kind of flown a little bit under the radar, and in the last week, have definitely had a number of concerns brought to my attention. I think BOMA had sent a letter to all of council pointing out a couple of their concerns, and just want to make sure that we're, we're able to try to respond to those or address those, and I'm not sure if, I don't think there's any sort of urgency on this, and so it seems like it'd be a, a deferral of some kind would be pretty reasonable.
Is a motion to defer until September 22nd. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
No. All right, sorry. Wait, I'm sorry, I should ask. Which one are we voting on specifically?
We were voting on the Bingle deferral of the ordinance relating to property maintenance and use standards.
36701.
701?
701.
Okay, okay, sorry. Thank you for the clarification. I switched drafts over here, and I was looking at the wrong one. I'm ready now.
So we were voting on the deferral till Sept- 20, September 22nd. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
So that is 3-3.
Fails.
Motion fails. Motion fails.
Final vote was 3-3.
Mm-hmm.
So the motion fails.
Yes. The next, Mr. Wright?
Next item is a motion to suspend the rules to add Ordinance 36719 relating to a PUD overlay zone for property at 2747 West Thorpe Road for first reading on July 14.
Mr. Gartner's going to come and speak to that before you get into it.
Hello, council. This is related to the Victory Heights development. The PUD overlay zone is almost an administrative action. Because it's a change to the zoning map, it requires council to adopt an ordinance, but it's essentially a, a given part of the process. And all it really does is change the map to indicate that there is a PUD at that location. With the, the decision a week and a half ago to, to deny the appeal, that PUD has now been established, and we just need to create the overlay zone. The reason we're asking for a suspension of the rules is that the original timeline with the developer was, I mean, before appeals and things, was really for months ago, they were wanting to get started. This is kind of the last hurdle that they need to meet, and we had, they had penciled in July 21st based on our recommendation of when we thought the process could be completed, and so we're just asking that you would suspend the rules and move it up so that we can get it done by the 21st, which is what I think all the parties were hoping for, so.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Rules have been suspended. Is there a motion relating to the first reading for final consideration?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second for first reading on July 14th, for the final consideration on July 21st. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, council. That's it for items for tonight's agenda. For the agenda for July 21st, council president requesting a motion to amend Resolution 2025-0052 relating to the council's budget priorities, to amend it, to adopt the Wilkerson-Cathcart-Dillon Amendment.
Is there a motion?
Also move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Oppone wants to speak to this, and then Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would support adopting this, but I will ask for a deferral after this. I think that there's a couple of things to add specifically around TREC as a funding issue that needs to be added, so just a one-week deferral to be able to do that. So putting this as the base and then adding that, and some clarity, I had a couple of questions that didn't get answered around, like, the meaning of, like, spoken arts, but I think can fix that pretty quick. So I'll make that motion after.
Councilmember Dillon, will you speak?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I do think, you know, we want to be in line with the intent of the original ordinance, so I would recommend that we defer it to July 28th. I think that we can accomplish what we need to in that time.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Well, I was just going to see if, if Chris would maybe just highlight what's in the amended, the changes in the amended version.
It's in the, hang on. Bear with me, I just got entered up back. Yeah, thank you. I just got there, but. One general change to the entire document was to change the original resolution, which was more like requesting reporting and data to actual funding requests. So administration said this sounded like, more like request for information than setting for funding priorities. So we adjusted the language on a lot of the bullet point items to reflect that. We included a specific request that the budget include a five-year reimbursement plan for the pension plan for Spokane employees. You remember, we had a presentation on that about possible reimbursement, reimbursement and timelines for that, and this resolution suggests a five-year reimbursement. There is a request to provide continued funding at the current level for animal control, as we explore ways to run an animal control program, or whatever this council ends up doing there. The addition of language access funding and making sure that those timelines are abided by, and a final item is to continue to support arts through outside contracting at the current level.
Any other, council? Thank you, Jacobi. Any other commentary? So we had left off with, to amend the resolution. So all, all those in favor of amending the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Abstentions? The resolution amended. Councilmembers Oppone?
Now, I'll make a motion to defer this to July 28th.
Second.
There is a motion in a second to defer till July 21st?
The 28th.
28th.
And I'll say that allows for us to adopt the amendment next week on the 21st, an amendment on the 21st, and then have a clean version by the 28th.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support the amendment, or excuse me, the deferral, but I'm a little, little concerned that it might get amended in a way that I'll no longer be able to support it, but we'll see where we land, but I think more time is fine.
Councilmember Klitsky?
Well, I'll just let you know, the one thing that I was hoping to add was better funding for neighborhood councils, especially with a CBDG in threat. We're only giving them $800 a year, and while some of them don't need it and don't use it, and that goes back into the equipment fund, there are a few that it's literally not even enough to send a postcard out to the whole neighborhood council to try to get more participation. So that's a big concern of mine. I think we need to reword the arts section slightly, and then I think we need to be more specific on our capital, I mean, our facilities discussion, because that's a huge can of worms. Most of it's in the capital improvement plan, but I think the stuff that we're interested in is pretty specific, so we might want to just save that. So those are the things that I'm looking at.
Councilmember Oppone, then Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, actually, I have a question for the committee, or the Wilkerson-Cathcart-Dillon Amendment, of kind of what, what are the specifics in there about the capital facilities? It kind of seemed general about all facilities, and I didn't know if we were trying to say we have a priority on some facilities or not, so just trying to get clarity on that.
Well, I'll just say for me, I think overall, it was over all facilities. There are some special ones that have come up for discussion lately that were top of mind, but we were not going to be specific to that. I think that's, facility should come to us and let us know, because I haven't seen a priority list of what facility capital needs to be invested in. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I think for me, I mean, there've been discussions last year as part of our special budget sessions about, you know, property audits and looking at the value of a lot of our different buildings, including those that weren't in use, and so doing that assessment and looking at what it would look like to potentially offload some of those properties, but also, yeah, what is some of the, the best use for some of our current capital facilities.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with all of that. You know, we've had this, this ongoing discussion for a couple of years on, you know, consolidation and, and best uses of the facilities, and, and so just maybe getting some clarity on, I mean, we may not know exactly what we plan, but, but just kind of what, what we're thinking, big picture, I think is important. Maintenance costs, you know, we've got, we still operate the Intermodal Center, which I think we lose money on year after year, but we've got contracts that make that challenging. We've got the, the county facilities that we rent that, you know, don't necessarily provide the adequate space and certainly aren't the best, highest standard facilities, and so just trying to figure out what are those big picture plans? How do we pay for all the maintenance? How do we pay for those things? Where are we headed, you know, down the road, be it next year or, or the biennium following, so.
I'll just say, one that popped up on my radar just recently was like the old fire station on Sherman. It's like there's conversation to make that a community center. It's like, I had no idea that there was a conversation to make that a community center, so for all those reasons that's been stated, I think a deferral would be. So all those in favor of a deferral? of a deferral, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? Abstention, that is deferred. Thank you. Then the last one, council, councilman, Mr. Wright?
Last item would be a potential motion to defer consideration, final consideration of C 36720 relating to the Complete Streets Program to July 28.
Councilmember McCathcart?
I guess, I didn't ask for this, I'm just curious, is there a reason why we need to defer? Is there a change coming?
Can I speak to that, Mr. Wright? I think it was requested.
I wasn't involved in this, so I don't know.
I believe it was requested.
Oh, so here comes Mr. McDaniel.
I'll move to defer till the 28th, so we can talk about it.
I'll second.
I think we just missed the newspaper notice requirements, because this is in Title 17.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to defer till July 28. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes, abstentions, that is deferred.
No changes are anticipated for the July 28 agenda, other than what we've adopted already, so just need a motion to approve the final agenda as a matter of time.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the final agendas. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? Abstentions, that is approved. We are now in recess until 6:00 p.m.